Also some business that was unknown at the time of posting regarding dispatchers, correct Andrew?
Yeah, so there was two dispatchers requested to be appointed by the police chief, Shawna Tankersley and Jacob Keys. They're both part-time dispatchers requested to move to full-time position as they, there are currently two openings.
So moved. So Chief Mashfield has requested a promotion to full-time and appointment and also to post the remaining open position. We had a motion, I didn't hear a second.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do this by roll call vote. I can't see all your faces, so.
David, you're frozen.
Borowski?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. I'm assuming you called me? Karen?
Mr. Borowski?
Yes.
Mr. Spewack?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Noble?
Yes.
Chair votes high, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Andrew. Is that the only item under unknown?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so then, basically, the reason for this gathering of the board is more prep work, right? And because you're gonna have to start thinking. A few weeks ago, the board unanimously decided upon closing town hall to allow employees to work remotely from their homes. That was done because the board unanimously wanted to protect our employees. That being said, it was also unanimous that the department heads would be working with their teams and either giving them daily or weekly direction and checking in with them and logging or reporting back, providing accountability to the town of the hours being worked and the work being done. The reason for that is, obviously, as you're all aware, it's illegal for us to pay someone for work not being done, so we have to document that the work is actually being done. So, we did get some reports back end of last week. Unfortunately, there are a lot of reports that were missing. There was reports missing from employees, reports missing from department heads, reports that were just woefully inadequate, that would never stand up if we got challenged saying, "You're paying public monies to people to perform work and there's no record of them doing the work." So, what we're hoping going forward is that by next Tuesday's actual meeting, the department heads will work with their teams to generate and provide the missing reporting from going back to day one of the working remotely and then continue that going forward so that we can continue to do this. Because obviously, our goal is to protect the employees as best we can, but we also do that both within state ethics and legally. So, we're one, basically, without that reporting, we're one public records request away of being in trouble. So, that being said, I think it's important that everyone be prepared. If we have all the reporting we need from department heads and the employees next week, it's a non-issue. If next week, we come to our Tuesday meeting and we are still missing reporting and we're missing detailed enough reporting to validate what we're trying to do, then we're gonna have to have a very difficult conversation of whether or not we are going to have to have layoffs or have to have furloughs or offer employees to use PTO if they don't want to provide reporting and work from home. Because we're not allowed to and it's not ethical, it's also not legal.
Through the chair.
Yes, John.
Through the chair. David, where's this coming from? Could you please explain to me where this this is stated in the law that we have to have exact data on what they did because I worked for a very big state department and this is not, this is not what is taking place at our place.
So, John, no one's asked for.
And it's, and it's the, I think, the way the state is approaching it is the way that we should approach it. We, we have department heads who are responsible for departments. They are tasked with making sure that the public is getting the services that they need to get from the departments such as the building department, the conservation commission, the planning board, et cetera, and also that we are doing the people's work by processing all the paperwork that we have to process, which is at the assessors office, the tax collections, the treasurer's office, and the other standalone departments that are actually out in the road doing the work. So I was just curious where this came from. Did the state tell us that we have to do this?
So, yeah, basically, I'll put it two ways. Number one, I've been asked. Number two, we've already had this come up where we've actually had town monies spent and we were paying a town employee to do work when they were supposedly working and they weren't working and we were paying them and that went to court and it went up to town. One, but we've already had a problem with this in the past. And so, third, no one's asked them to provide specific minute-by-minute hour reporting. All we've asked for is each week, the department heads, and by the way, this very board, every member, agreed to this when we agreed to do the remote working, that the department heads would give their employees either daily or weekly tasks and then at the end of the week, they would report back and then they would send those in. Right now, if someone were to challenge us and say, "You are paying people," it's already happened, we've already had this, we've already gone to court over this once. We don't want to do it again.
So, David, just to explain, that was, that was something that was way far off the realm of what we're talking about here, okay? That's way, 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 way off the realm of what's happening here.
John, it's actually the same thing.
We have changed, we have changed the operation of the town on a national emergency, okay?
It's not, that's actually incorrect. And according to the state and the laws, the COVID, what it allows us to do is give one extra benefits if they're dealing with a COVID reason to not be able to do the work or not be able to do the work from home. It also allows us to reassign people out of their category to do work not in their job description in order to protect their employment. We've been trying to do all of that and it's, and it is literally the exact same thing. We've got.
No, this is, no, no, this is, this is almost, my own personal opinion through the chair.
I appreciate that, John.
My personal opinion on this.
John, I'm gonna ask you to stop for one second. I appreciate that very much. But it doesn't change the fact that we've already had to go to court once for paying taxpayer money in salary to a town employee who was not doing their job. David. We don't want to do that again. No one, no one has asked, and by the way, no one has asked people to give minute-by-minute reporting. We simply ask for summaries from the people what you're doing. And quite frankly, if somebody wants to email back that, "I'm sitting at home and I'm monitoring emails" and that's what they've done for an entire week, then that doesn't justify us paying people full-time salaries. Now, this board wants to protect our employees. But I'm gonna tell you flat out, one public records request away. I'm sorry, I'm saying you are paying.
Through the chair, through the chair, through the chair. That's a line of crap, David, okay? We're one public records request away from this. This, what we want to do is if we think that the reporting's not being done correctly, we tell the department heads who we've already charged with taking care of this to take care of it. Threatening to furlough the employees is way beyond the realm. I usually don't get too excited about things. I'm excited about this.
I appreciate that, John, but no one's threatening to furlough employees and the first people we will go to are the department heads and we'll have a conversation with them. And by the way, I opened this up by saying, flat out, A, the board was unanimous in wanting to protect our employees and B, we still are. And quite frankly, if we're simply asking for the absolute minimum, just send in a summary of the work you've done during the week to your department head so they can provide reporting to Andrew so he can keep it on file, that's not asking a lot. That's asking.
No, I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's asking a lot and I think that, I think that the things that I've seen across my, across my iPad have been justified.
Well, I can tell you the reports I've seen, it's not a question of the reports I've seen so much, it's the reports we haven't seen. So realistically, by now, Andrew should have received reports from the department heads regarding every employee. That hasn't happened. Now, we did finally get some reports and those reports are for one week. Town hall's been closed for more than one week. So I think we're asking for the absolute minimum. And I can tell you, everyone I know that's working from home, including myself, my wife and everyone else, she has reported, literally, we're doing it easy. She has reported every single day, every morning, every evening, and everything she did all day long. And everyone I know working from home are under the same circumstances. We're simply asking for summaries. Just, hey, give us a summary, make sure the department head is actually in contact with their team and every week, they get that report back so that all the department heads can turn those reports into Andrew and Andrew can keep them on file. It's not asking for a lot.
Through the chair?
But.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I think what would help everybody involved is if we just had some sort of chain of command and accountability. You know, some sort of a buck stops here thing, that concept? We don't, we don't have an, you know, so, again, I don't like holding the threat of furlough over anyone's head as somebody who works for a much smaller agency. What we discussed was that at my agency, that also, you know, I'm also paid for with, you know, federal tax dollars, that's my job, I go in every day. But for those people that don't, they do report every day to our executive director what they've done. Now, whether he makes a note of it is up to him. That's, you know, above my pay grade. But I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to, once a day, at the end of the day, send an email to your department head or supervisor going, "This is what I did today." Once a week, the department head summarizes that, sends it to Andrew, who then disseminates it to this board. I think that's perfectly acceptable.
And it's the absolute minimum.
Yes.
Through the chair, I agree with that. That, that, and we did agree with the board as that. I don't need a minute-by-minute detail from everybody about what they're doing. I have, I have faith in the department heads that they're gonna tell us what's going on in their department and the real, the real test is, we're gonna hear from the citizens that are using these departments if they're unhappy with the service that they get.
Well, I'd go one further, John. So, A, no one's asked for minute-by-minute. All they've asked for was summaries. But I will tell you, a summary is not, I did a webinar this week or I monitored email this week. That's not a summary. And while all we want are summaries and we all want to protect the employees, and so we are simply asking for the minimum. The fact is, we are responsible first and foremost to the taxpayers and we all talk about integrity and transparency. Well, transparency also comes down to, hey, these are trying times and we're trying to navigate these waters, but that also means we're being responsible. We're being responsible with your tax dollars and managing the town and making sure we keep the town healthy and whole and we do our best employees at the same time.
Through the chair, through the chair, very quickly. I think that we can do all those things without micromanaging the day-to-day operations of the town hall by leaving that responsibility where it should be, which is with the department heads and allowing them to take charge of their department as they have been doing, but perhaps that's not getting filtered back to everyone correctly. And, and this is true, if something does fall through the cracks, if a ball is dropped, we all know that we will hear about it very quickly, probably.
So, and while I agree with you, people, you'll hear about it if people have a complaint.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Yes, but if someone is sitting at home and using this time as a vacation, you're not, you're about that, you're not gonna get a complaint. But it's also gross mismanagement and it's also a fraudulent use of taxpayer money. And so that's the concern. So, asking for summaries is not much and you're, and you're right, and everyone agrees, it's on the department heads. So, this is gonna come down to, if we don't have reporting, you know, no one threatened to furlough employees. In fact, we're asking them to help us to avoid any of that. We're asking our department heads to do their jobs so they don't have to have that conversation. That's why we're talking today. So we're hoping that department heads will do their jobs, provide Andrew with the summaries and make them available to him and the board. So if anybody ever wants them, they're on file. And if something didn't get done, the person who's gonna have to come before the board and talk about it is gonna be the department head.
Okay, so through the chair, I would like to give Andrew an opportunity to talk about what was put in place, when it was put in place and his recommendations moving forward. I respectfully to the chairman, I agree with John. I don't think right now we're comparing apples to apples. These are unprecedented times. Yes, we have to be good stewards, you know, we have to, we have an obligation to be good stewards with the taxpayer dollars, but we also have an obligation to our employees as well. And we shouldn't, I agree with something that Deb had said too, we shouldn't be micromanaging. The process should be put in place. The department heads should report to our town administrator. And if there is an issue, he's the one that should be, we should, we have oversight, but he's the one should be recommending to us what course of action that needs to be taken or should be taken. So if we could, if you would indulge and let Andrew say a few words, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. I do disagree that it's not important that we actually have records of what we're doing with taxpayers.
Oh, it's, it's, I'm sorry. It is important that we have the records and my understanding is they are being provided. But again, I'd like to let Andrew speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, these are unprecedented times and we're trying to do everything that we can to, you know, keep the, keep the wheels moving, you know, really in a way that we've never operated before. You know, the first two weeks here have been kind of real flying by, just trying to figure out what we're doing, how we're doing, how we're doing in a completely different way. Coming up with a way of documenting that, reporting back, well, the official word to the departments of how to initially try to log that went to them last week. So, the fact that, you know, those hadn't been done up to this point falls onto nobody other than myself. So, I'm trying to, you know, we're working together to try to find the happy medium that doesn't work as far, or that isn't a micro-management situation, but also keeps track of the hours to make sure it's getting done. So, you'll see that I did forward you guys a policy that does outline that procedure that would be, you know, hopeful that, since it's not just a two-week period here, we're talking about, we're talking about a month and a half at the minimum, that is how we're gonna operate throughout the month of April.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, through the chair, what you have come up with isn't anything that you created per se. It's something, you're, you're taking best practices or a template from, and I know you put it in an email to us and I can't remember exactly where, but.
Right, the Mass Municipal Association had used this or had kind of sent this policy around as a best practice that was used in another community and, you know, I thought it seemed like a good template. It's the same framework of reporting that came back to, on most of them and, you know, frankly, if it's not, if, you know, if it's not sufficient, then I need to know that so that way I can notify people otherwise.
So, Andrew, a question for you. So the conversations we've had coming from the private sector and the business world and what all of the businesses who are dealing with COVID-19 are literally doing, since anyone who pretty much is in business today or 95% of the private businesses outside of the essentials, the non-essentials who are still employed, in many cases, if not most, are working from home. These are the policies, procedures that they're doing. So when we did make this vote, it was unanimous. Were the department heads told at that time what we had decided?
About the report, about the reporting requirements?
Yes.
Negative.
About, because we had the conversation regarding accountability.
Right, the conversation at the time was based on to make sure that your, your departments are still operating. We didn't, I didn't have a framework in place until this week.
Okay, so when we had this conversation in the very beginning, one of the biggest concerns was having employees work from home. We wanted them to do this, the board, all of us, we want them to do this, we still want them to be able to do this. The bottom line was, at the time, we were also very unanimous that we want them to be able to work from home, but we also are going to need accountability. We're going to need the reporting back so we can keep those records that we're paying people to work from home to doing the work.
Right. So, the fact that it hasn't been done falls on nobody other than myself and I take full responsibility.
All right, so I think a conversation needs to be had with the department heads. As far as reporting, this isn't, you know, it isn't something that requires, you know, standardized forms. I don't think anyone cares whether, whether employees or department heads are using Word or Excel or hour-by-hour, or here's a summary, or hey, I'm, I did five virtual meetings. I mean, all they want is a summary. As long as it's provided and you have those on file.
Right.
I think that alleviates all the problems.
Right, but I need to know what is, right, but I need to know what constitutes as being good enough. So.
So basically, I'll put it this way, if you get someone who says, "For an entire week of work", and remember, and people can argue all they want, but anyone who wants to argue this, don't ever claim transparency or integrity publicly. If you're willing to spend taxpayer money to have people work from home with no oversight, no reporting and no accountability, you can't claim those words. If people are gonna work from home, which we want them to be able to do, then you can't just say, "I sat home all week and checked email." Because to me and to a lot of people and a lot of taxpayers and people that have asked, actually asked me what's going on, they scoff at that and say, "Are you kidding me?" And I'm like, "No, that's all I can tell you because that's all I have." You know, realistically, and I sent Andrew a sample of, I didn't actually put the details in of what I had to do for daily and weekly reporting, working from home. I did not send Andrew what my wife has to do every single day, daily, in order to keep her job, working from home. But I did send Andrew a, a sample he could use, which is nothing more than a summary that says, "Hey, gonna do this this week, did this last week and I got this done." It doesn't get much more simpler than that. David, through you? Yeah. So, just from my own perspective, I mean, really, the way I think about this is that it's really about being proactive. So what I would just ask the department heads and Andrew, simply, if a taxpayer asked us the question of, "So, town hall's closed," or I should say, "Multiple buildings are closed, they're still getting paid", what, what are they doing? That's, at least that's all I'm looking for, is simply to be able to say, "Well, look, such and such", and I'm, I'm literally making up a department, please don't get mad at me on this. Like, the Board of Assessors had done X this week. Oh, great. Literally, that's all I'm looking for in.
Where is it?
No more, no less, just a justification to say, "Yeah, everyone, we are still paying everyone because everyone is still working their jobs as best they can under these circumstances." I mean, David, to David's point, unless we have something like that, it's difficult to be able to answer it. But I don't think this is a, like, this is not the apocalypse. This is more of a, let's just be ready in case the question comes up because, I mean, a lot of people in town probably have been laid off or furloughed, not town employees, but just from their jobs. And if they start asking the questions, I'd like to be able to go to them and say, "Well, no, of course, town hall's still working. Look at all the stuff that they've done. Granted, it's been unusual circumstances." So again, I would just, you know, A, thank the employees now who are on the line, all the department heads and you, Andrew. Let's just try to find a way that, again, to be proactive in case the question comes up, plus honestly, for our own fiduciary oversight, to make sure the taxpayers' money is being spent well. Outside of that, I mean, I don't want to make this more than it is, but I also don't want to make it less than it is. I mean, people should be working and I'm assuming they are. And I suppose all we're looking for is to make sure that we have some record to say, "Yes, this is what was done for the week." Anyway, that's my two cents. Again, I don't want to make more of this than it is, but, I mean, David, I, I mean, I do agree with David that in case the question is asked, plus for our own oversight and Andrew through you, I mean, for your oversight as well, you know, we should have a better idea around what people are doing. Outside of that, I'm good.
So I did provide a, oh, sorry, through the chair, I did provide, when this first started, a continuity government plan to give you an overview of exactly how everybody would be operating, what they would be, you know, what their general tasks and operations are. Updated that last week with a more detailed of kind of what everybody was actually kind of what the general departments were working on and what that was and, you know, say admittedly, once I got to page six and, you know, I was trying to get it out by the end of the week. You know, so I apologize that it didn't have every single individual employee's task and what they were specifically working on. But I was hoping that the reports that I provided yesterday and a few that came in later on in the day that I followed up with in three separate, three separate emails, which covered just about every single department, gave a better oversight of actually what was going on. So we're trying to get that accountability a little bit better. Additionally, you know, with, you know, every employee does have to sign off on the fact of the hours that they do and their payrolls every week. They attest to that. That's something that is no different than when they're onsite or whether they're working offsite. So, you know, we're, we're gonna try to find the right way to move, to move forward here and, you know, it's just, it's, it's one day at a time and it went from being a, again, a two-week temporary thing to a more, a more permanent situation that we're in.
Yeah, Andrew, I think, and I think that's a concern, is that, that it's gonna be somewhat iterative until we can get a, a routine that everyone feels comfortable with. So honestly, we'll just give feedback and figure out what works best. I mean, and it's, I mean, don't, you know, don't fall on your sword on this because there are much bigger things that we're gonna have to be worried about in the next two to three months. But at the same time, again, let's just make sure that, that we can answer the question.
Through the, through the chair?
And to Bill's point, and John, I, I will in a second, to Bill's point. Yes, we shouldn't be desperate to make this more than it is. And I get the feeling that several select board members are doing exactly that, making it more than it is, which the whole reason we had this conversation tonight was so that it never gets to the point where it becomes more than it should be.
So, through the chair?
Yes, John.
I'm not making it any more than I think it should be. I think that my, my feeling, my personal feeling, and maybe I took it the wrong way, is that we were going on, on the attack against the employees and I was gonna have, and I was gonna have none of that, okay? But the, the second, the second portion of this is that I think that Andrew has started, has, for, for something that's way out of anything we've ever done before, I think he's, he's started with the best place, which is with the MMA, to use the best practices that they are. There's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. I think if Andrew keeps working, working with his peers, the other town administrators and town managers, as to how they control, you know, how are they controlling this in their, in their town halls? What are they, what are they doing? There's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. I think if, if we, if we follow that, you know, that track, which I believe it's what Andrew is, is trying to do and the reports that I saw that came, came through yesterday, Andrew, were fine for me, you know, and I don't know, you know, David was referring to something else that I hadn't seen, I guess, but, you know, David, you're, you're right. I watched emails all week is not the correct answer, okay? That's not, and the department head should not forward that was saying that's what the, that's what the employee did. But, you know, I just want to reiterate, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Use the best practices that the MMA is putting out, work, you know, work with your peers and see what else we have to do, Andrew. That's my take on it.
Yeah, thank you, John. And I think you would agree, you've been on the board for a while. This board and even our predecessors, preceding boards have always done whatever they can to support and protect our employees. We always have. We've gone through probably the worst economic conditions, right, since the Great Depression, the Great Recession, without laying off anybody. So we've all tried to do that. We've always tried our best to protect our employees. But we've always been proactive and we want to continue being proactive. We want to continue to protect our employees while protecting the town at the same time and being proactive ensures we do exactly that. So I think, through a chair, I think the takeaway is just kind of what we said with Andrew, just kind of, you know, continue to work with the department heads, iterate as best you can, you know, we'll provide feedback and, you know, to the employees and the department heads on the call, again, you know, I appreciate everything that you're doing. You know, everything you can do to document the work as best you can without micromanaging and giving us like an hourly detail, just giving a very high-level summary. I think, at least for me, that's all I'm asking for and it sounds like that's what, at least a majority of the board is asking for. Again, put yourselves.
I think that's all, yeah, Bill.
Someone asked the question of, "So, what are the town hall employees doing at home while they're getting paid?" Now we can just literally slide a document to them and go, "Here's, here's what they're doing. So what's the question?" Right, or even, or not even provide the documents and saying, "Here," but somebody be able, simply, because I will tell you flat out, I've actually had two people already complain to me. And I'm like, "I don't, I don't know." So, not that I want to say, "Oh, hey, by the way, here's the paperwork." But just to be able to tell people, "Hey, guess what? Yes." the paperwork. But just to be able to tell people, hey, guess what? Yes, these are uncharted waters, but we're being proactive. We're working with the town employees. They're working from home. And to be able to just tell them, hey, they are all providing reporting to their department heads. The department heads are all providing to Andrew, he has it's all. But to be able to, but to have to look at a taxpayer in the face and say, yeah, I don't know. That's not a good place to be.
Well, through the chair, you know, it, I'm just curious whether the complaint was that a service wasn't provided, or that they were just concerned that the lights were off and they didn't see anybody at town hall.
No, it is, like I said, it was actually two different people. And in both cases, in both cases, they were flat out saying, what's going, why are you paying people to stay home? Are you paying people to actually work? They were asking me, are they actually working? Are you paying them to stay at home? What's the town doing? I'm like, we're paying them to work. Well, what are they doing? Well, I don't really know.
The answer is we're continuing to do our jobs. We're just not doing it at town hall.
Can I raise my hand?
That's not an answer. Sure.
Nicole Neal, Assistant Treasurer for the Town of Charlton. It's good to see you all.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi. I'm a little concerned by Mr. Singer's concerns here. He's had two townspeople asking what it is that we're actually doing from home. We are, without a doubt, providing the same services that we provide when we're working in the town hall offices from home. We are answering phone calls. We are answering emails. We are answering questions from lenders, from, you know, taxpayers. It is constant. I'm answering the phone on Saturday, on Sunday, on Friday, at night after five o'clock, at night after seven o'clock on a Tuesday night. I do payroll for the town. I'm coordinating all of the payroll for the town. So I'm a little confused as to who it is that's asking the questions and what it is specifically that they want to know and what they think that we are not accomplishing. Because if there is a towns person that thinks that something is not being done, I would very much like to know who that person is and how we can accommodate them. We are going way above and beyond to answer questions, to get the job done. And it's concerning to me that there are people out there that think that that's not happening.
Well, so the reality is, there are people out there who think that's not happening. So that is why we simply ask, and I will tell you, and it's basically, not to sound rude, but it's business 101. Anytime businesses have employees work remotely, they always have some kind of a reporting. There's whether it's a Salesforce or CRM tool, or emails, or weekly reports and highlights. Every business in the world that has their employees work from home does it. It's basic. And so all of you
I'm not arguing with that at all.
Nicole, I'm not going to argue with you on a select meeting. This meeting was called for one reason and one reason only, to ensure that this board can continue to protect the employees like you. So we can continue to pay all of our employees to work from home. And so that we can look taxpayers in the face and say, yes, they are working from home, and they are providing reports to their department heads, and the department heads are working with Andrew. And that's all we've asked for. And that's all we're going to ask for. And that gives us the tools we need to look at a taxpayer in the face and say, hey, you know what? They're working from home. They are working with the department heads. They have provided reporting. It's all there.
Sure, sure. I'm not, I'm not arguing that at all, Mr. Singer. I'm just, I'm concerned because I provided that report for the last week, and I'm getting the, excuse me, let me finish. I'm getting the impression, and it's only from you, that the report that I provided was not adequate.
So Nicole, you broke up, but I will tell you this. Yes, some employees have provided reporting, but not everyone has. Neither have department heads. And so it's more of a conversation for department heads. And that is why, if you'll notice, by the way, no one called out any employees, no one called out department heads, no one called out departments, because many people did provide reporting. What we're trying to do is provide uniform reporting and a uniform way of saying, everything is being done across the board.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. Really, what I what I want to stress is that, and I think Andrew touched on this, is that this is uncharted territory. We're all just trying to figure things out. And and we're really, really working together and working as a team. I mean, this is town hall strong is what we're calling it. We are working together to provide you the information you need to be able to feel comfortable when a towns person does approach you and say, well, what are they doing? How can they possibly work remotely from home? We are really working very hard to do that for you. So, you know, if it's uniformity is what you're looking for, I don't think that there's a problem with that. I think it's very difficult for some people to understand that the departments are very varied in their jobs. You know, I may answer the phone 25 times on Monday, and I may not answer it all on, you know, Tuesday. It's how it goes. However, there's always something to do, and we have, we always have something to do.
Absolutely. And that's why no one has asked for hour by hour detailed daily reporting.
Good.
So I will go back to again, people need to not make more of it than it is. But at the same time, I will flat out say, if people think that we're not under an obligation to the taxpayers, that's a concern. And I think that if people think they're providing a simple weekly summary is too much to be asked for, then that's a concern. And that'll be something that you should take up with a department head. Because if people think that just sending in a weekly summary is too difficult, then that is the conversation that should be had. And that was not where this entire meeting was intended to go. This town has always worked hard to protect its employees. That hasn't changed.
Well, it's okay.
This town is trying to take steps to proactively keep that going, and make sure that we are not only keeping it going, but we're doing it in both an ethical and legal manner. Period. End of story. And so you can take it any way you want. But reality is, all we're asking the employees and department heads is, help us help you. And that's really to to simplify. Help us help you is what's being asked. No one says, I want to know everyone you spoke to today. No one's asking for that. No one's asking for how many, you know, phone calls did I make today? And how long was on the phone? Nobody wants that kind of reporting. But they want summaries to the department heads, and department heads should be answering to Andrew.
I have no problem with that.
And through the chair, I would recommend, again, that the town administrator provide feedback to the department heads if he believes that the reports are
Aaron, you there?
Yep. Can you hear me? Can everyone, John, can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you're back. You went out, but you came back.
Okay, I'm not moving, honest. As I was saying, I think it's important that the department heads provide the information of the reports to to Andrew. And if he thinks that they need more work, that they're deficient or whatever, then he should provide them with that feedback. But I don't think, I think we have sending the message very clearly to what should happen. But I don't believe we should micromanage. And I'm not saying we're doing that, but I think we're borderline on that. And because it's got, remember, Andrew's got five bosses, basically, and I'm sure it's not easy because we're all very different. So he needs to have guidance as to what, what we as a, you know, altogether agree upon is acceptable. And so I know one breath, we're saying a summary, and another breath, it's like best practice. We need to agree what the tool should be, and then let him handle it. And if a resident asks, you know, what they're doing, we can say, they are providing reports to our town administrator. But as Andrew started to touch on, you know, if someone's complaining, if someone's saying, I was unable to do X, Y, or Z, they need to know what they can do to have that situation remedied. Then, and we should be providing that advice, you know, and reach out to the town, reach out to Andrew. But are we going to agree on the tool that should be used? Because a summary, my summary might be very different from the summary that David's going to be happy with. That's going to be very different from the rest of us. So I don't think that's fair to Andrew.
First off, two things. One, I think we said in the beginning, too, I don't think anyone cares whether people send in summaries to their boss, or word, or whatever. But that, again, and to your point, no one's micromanaging. And if you think this is micromanaging, then you've never been micromanaged. It is up to Andrew to run this. And if he wants to have a standardized form, that's his call. I sent him a sample that he could use if he wants to, which is literally nothing more than a summary form that people can just summarize, hey, boom, here you go. Which, by the way, is what I have to do. So it's like, you can use this or not, but that's Andrew's call.
But that's my point, David, that we all, we all need to agree because we, select people all have different ideas of what maybe this should be. And that's going to, that's not, that's not very helpful to Andrew. It's just, we got to agree on what he should be using.
So if you want to
That's all. Best practice. I like the best practice that he's, that he, that he is using.
So right now, so right now, it's been left up to Andrew. If you want Andrew to create a form and send it to everyone and say, hey, here's what I'm going to do to have an actual board vote on it, that's fine. I didn't think that was necessary.
No, I don't. I, I don't think that's not, what I'm saying is, we all need to be in agreement. And if he believes these reports are deficient, then he needs to reach out to the department heads. And if we get questioned, we send them over to to our TA, to, and if people really want to look at the reports, as you pointed out earlier, it's all public record. But again, none of us asked to be put in this position, right? Again, unprecedented times, and we have an obligation to our employees, we have an obligation to the taxpayers. I get it. We just all need to be on the same page with how we move forward and what our roles are. That's all.
Well, for the record, John was actually asked to be put in this position. So sorry, John.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to lighten the mood a bit. Look, at the end of the day, through a chair, I don't want to be redundant what I said before. I have faith in Andrew. I have faith in all the department heads. I think, having reviewed the first set, it's clearly some, let's just say, lessons learned that what we'd like is a little more detail. And just to, just to be able to say, yes, this is what we did. Okay. I mean, really, it's going to be an iterative process. It's, it's a very unusual time. We don't know how long that it's going to go on for either. I mean, we're hoping, what, and Andrew, what, month or two? I mean, who knows, though, right? I mean, we're shut down.
We're hoping a few more weeks.
And that's Well, I mean, I mean, I'm assuming at least going into May. And then who knows after that, depending upon how the virus continues to evolve. So let's just do our best as a collective town hall team, as like Nicole said, you know, town hall, town hall strong. And let's just make, you know, let's just make sure that we are all, again, rowing this, like, rowing the boat in the same direction, that we're doing the right level of reporting so that Andrew gets what he needs, so that the five of us get what we need, so that the residents can ask at any time, and we can very easily answer the question of, so are people really working the 38.5 hours a week? And we can say without any hesitation, with quantitative and or qualitative data to back it up, the answer is, I'm confident that it's occurring now. Once we have the data via Andrew, via the department heads, it makes it that much easier in case that we're pressed on. So if we do that, I think we're good.
Through the chair.
Deb.
I would just add one more caveat, as, as I was listening to Bill talk about this. If an employee, a town hall employee, feels that they don't have the tools to be able to do their job, 37 to 38 and a half hours per week, I want them to feel comfortable enough to go to their department head, or to go to the TA, or to give one of us a shout and say, hey, I want to do more, but I don't think I'm going to be able to. Can you help me with this? Because, you know.
Yeah. So Deb.
In the end, I want everybody to have, you know, confidence that they can do their job well. And if they don't have those tools, then we need to do something about that, and we need to know about it. I don't want this to be an us versus them situation. Nobody wants that.
Yeah. And so Deb, to your point, every employee, we hope, is comfortable in speaking with their department head. And if they're not, they should come to a member of the select board and and share their concerns. And Andrew, basically, Andrew is the go-to point for the Board of Selectmen, and we're responsible for the department heads. And if there's an issue, then we should know about it. But they should be comfortable going to the department heads and expressing their concerns. That's number one. Number two, I'll go back to what John McGrath brought up earlier. No one's asking for an hour by hour accounting of what they do for a week. I don't think anyone on this board is asking, hey, I want to see 38.5 hours logged. And if I don't, it's a problem. What we want to see is do your best to hit it. Come close, but just provide a summary to your boss of what you, what you did this week and what got done. If someone feels that they can't do their job from home, then you know what? Talk to their department head. We'll work with them. Get them, we can, one thing I did check and find out is during these times, if it came down to it in order to protect an employee's job, we could give them work outside of their job description if they felt it was necessary. So employees have a lot of options available to them. Talk to their supervisor, just provide the summary. No one's saying, hey, prove me every minute of your day. No one's asking for that. But to Deb's point, if someone feels that they can't, they just can't do their jobs from home, but they would like something else to do, then they can go to the department head for that, too. The town has the power to give them other work outside their job description to keep them employed.
Can I?
Because the goal here is, the goal here is to keep them all employed.
Just as a, as a side note to Mr. Singer's comment, that was actually mentioned in an email from Andrew, that if your department does not have enough work to, you know, fill your 38-hour-a-week requirement, or whatever your hourly, weekly requirement is, that, you know, you could possibly be helping out another department. You know, we all have, and I'm going to put it in air quotes, busy work that we can be doing. So far, I've had a really hard time touching that busy work. It's been busy enough without the busy work. But just, just so you know, that was mentioned, and we're, I think, most of us are aware that it does exist. And we're all more than willing to help out another department as well. I know that there are certain departments in this crisis that are being slammed right now, and we'll do anything we can to help them in this time of crisis. So just, just a side note, not to, you know.
Yeah, no, that's, that's appreciated. And we're just making sure that everyone does understand that because the bottom line is, the board wants to do everything we can ethically and legally to keep everyone working.
Yep.
And that's the
Okay.
Anything else, or is that it?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Done.
Andrew.
Well.
Through the chair, motion to adjourn, unless anyone has any other business in the audience.
Second.
All right, we'll do it by roll call vote. Mr. McGrath.
Aye.
Ms. Noble.
Aye.
Ms. Fiewak.
Aye.
Ms. Borowski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrew.
Good night. Stay safe.
Nicole, thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Bye.